All right, we will call to order the Exeter School Board meeting for March 10th, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a nice purple-violet agenda, as usual. And on the agenda, in addition to the different things that we're going to talk about tonight, there's a note on the back of the agenda. It's not specifically on the front of the agenda, but I always like to highlight it, which is just about the right to know law in non-public sessions. As a board, we conduct our business in public, and yet unless there's a reason to do it in private, and it's very limited on why we would do that. And if that was going to happen for some reason tonight, we would talk about the right to know law. The other piece is, and have to make a motion and get approvals to do that. The other piece that's on here are Exeter School Board goals, and it says for 2018-19, those were our goals in 2018-19, but we also agreed to carry them over to this year. So there's a number of things that are on there: safety and security, social emotional health, student learning, diversity, equity, and board management, that are all things that we wanted to highlight and focus on this year. It's not the only things that the board is involved with, it's certainly not the only things that the school district is involved with. There's a ton of things that the school district does, but those are a couple of things that we wanted to just try to highlight. So, all right, so back to the main agenda. So after the call to order, we have visitors. Are there any visitors here that would like to address the board? I don't see any. So we'll move forward, and next is public input, which is not different from visitors, but there's another opportunity that if they're folks in the public that also wanted to give input to the board on any of the things that are going on. Sometimes we have things with policies that we introduce for the first time, and we have a couple of sessions to get input before we make a final decision about them, or sometimes it's other activities that are going on. So, don't see anyone that wants to provide public input either, so we will move forward, which are, we have minutes from the last time that we met, which is on February 4th. Usually we meet on the second Tuesday, but we met a bit earlier because of the voting sessions and the final sessions with that. So we have both a public board meeting and a non-public board meeting, and, excuse me, a non-public board meeting, and we have minutes from those. So, do we have-
And then to make a motion to accept both sets of minutes?
Okay, we do have a motion about that then. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Aye, second.
Okay, and Sarah, a second. Any discussion or amendments or anything to the minutes? Okay, then let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that was unanimous, so those are both approved. All right, so next we move on to the chair's report, and we start with our favorite group, the PTO.
Allison Battles, I'm the president of the PTO. I wasn't here in February, there wasn't a lot to report because we hadn't met yet, and we actually did end up canceling our February meeting due to the tragic passing of our social media manager, Cassie Hepner. And I will mention that a little bit down the way as well. So, some updates, just working with our treasurer on a couple of school requests that came up earlier this year, and I think funding some additional Chromebooks for Lincoln Street, so we're going to confirm budget availability for that. We ended up not doing a January fundraiser, so we just need to see where our numbers are in terms of fundraising for this year. Some updates there, the box tops are up over almost to $1,500. We're at $1,470 so far, which is an increase of over $200 since January, so I think a lot of people are using the app and scanning their receipts, which is great. There are still clippable box tops, and they are still being collected, so sometimes you can clip and scan, which is nice. We were the beneficiary of the Hannaford bag program, so if you bought a bag at Hannaford in the month of January, it gave us a dollar, so that raised $26, which is great. And then we have another restaurant night planned, probably in April, and we're working on doing a Parents' Night Out, which I think we'll get more into discussion about tomorrow at our next PTO meeting. And then we're going to be promoting the Lincoln Street Yearbook, which is primarily a 5th grade yearbook, but it will be available to all Lincoln Street students. That will start promoting in schools and online this month. And I'm working with, or reviewing, the teacher tailor kits from two companies, and then we'll make a decision on which one we're going to go with as an end-of-the-year school fundraiser, so that hopefully will set us up for the fall a little bit better, and we'll have a better idea of what we can fund at the very beginning of the school year. An update on Get Fit in May, we have 49 people registered so far, which is an increase of 14 people over the same time last year, so that's great. We really like working with Millennium Running, it's been a good switch for us. And sponsorship is moving along, we have received about $5,000 so far. We're still awaiting forms and payments from our larger sponsors, including Access, but they have committed, we just haven't received it yet. And we chose a T-shirt design last week, and I think that someone will be reaching out to Lincoln Street if they haven't already to announce the winner. And then the family donation flyer for having family names on the back of the T-shirts, that will go out this month. And we've had, so in light of Cassie's passing, we have had two volunteers step in to help with social media promotions, so things have been a little bit quiet online for the last few weeks, but we have had some people step up to help, so we're just getting everyone up to speed with the cycle of things, and so you'll start seeing a lot more promoted on Facebook in the next couple of weeks. And we have, we're doing our bi-weekly meetings now, we weren't meeting once a month, but now we're meeting every other week for Get Fit, and our next meeting is next Thursday, March 19th, at 5:30 in Mr. Schmidt's room. So what we're looking to fill for next year, I'm still looking for a co-president, and we'll be needing a treasurer and a social media manager, and we would like to have two, one or two more folks to kind of handle some of the smaller fundraisers over the course of the year. We found that it's really helpful to have one person working on some of the smaller things, so that my fundraising chair and I can focus on some of the larger events over the course of the year. And Michelle Harvell has taken on the yearbook, and she's just run with it, like she just gives me an update, and I don't need to worry about it, it's just rolling. So, our next meeting is tomorrow at 5:30 in the Main Street School Library, and we won't have childcare this month, the PEA kids are on break, and I just wasn't able to get anyone else to cover for us, so hopefully in April we'll have childcare, because April will be our elections meeting, so it'd be good to have someone to cover the kids, so that everyone can come and pick new officers. So, that's it for me, any questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have, no one here about the coronavirus, or I guess, you know, coronavirus, from what I, the little bit that I understand about medicine, that describes all kinds of viruses that have been out there, but we're talking about the current strain of it. It's been in the news quite a bit, and there's been a lot of concern, and there's been a lot of updates that have been put out to the community through our superintendent, and you know, also in the media. And so, want to start by having Esther provide a bit of an update and review about some of the thinking and initiatives and information that we might have to share with the community.
Sure, just so everyone's clear, kind of the process we've used since the beginning of when it's become more prevalent in the media and a bigger concern for all of us in our communities, is we do have Dr. Kristin Johnson, who is a core physician. She is our physician liaison with SAU 16s, and that's not a new position for us. She, some of you may have recalled the whooping cough at the high school a few years ago, she was the liaison physician on that also, which has been a great resource for us from the medic, to get the medical perspective. And you'll note that all the information that's come out of David's office has also been co-signed by her, so that parents know that there's been some consulting to the medical side, as well as from the school side. As far as that process in itself, Dave and I have usually, that's why I have my phone here, I'm getting the Corona text session now, usually it's about this time of night, any updates? He's committed to putting something out about every 48 hours, is in the process of developing his next letter, and that's what these texts were about, was, did he miss anything, these are the things he's going to mention, et cetera, and Dr. Johnson and I are both on this group text, so we kind of confer nightly on that with any changes that might come out of CDC. As of right now, there are no changes out of CDC from the last information letter, but this one will speak to how we are, our kind of next phase of planning has moved to how to provide instructional continuity should the governor and/or the Department of Health and Human Services declare our schools have to be closed. That is not the case as of today, but we did want to prepare, so we met with principals yesterday, and kind of talked through how they would work with their teachers and talk to teachers today, and provide some information, so that they're preparing how they would communicate with your children to provide some sort of instructional continuity. I don't want to be misleading, that does not mean that your child will be at the computer all day, and the teacher will be at the other side teaching a class. It'll be more project-based, more work on this, read some stories, if you go to the grocery store, you know, trying to make real-life, authentic learning in the home environment. Certainly, there may be some students that don't have access to technology, so we need to provide and consider that. There will be no deficit, meaning no grading, negative grading implications for our upper grades, for students to complete projects for a variety of reasons, so, but we do want to offer that to our students to continue that. So, that's kind of our next big hurdle that we're working through, as well as our trips, and I'm just checking this to make sure I'm saying this right, from the high school perspective, there was a group that was going to go to Paris, that actually was canceled by the hosts, by the French hosts. They said, no go on the trip for us, they won't let us in, which is probably a good thing, because we probably would have been canceling it on our side anyhow as we got closer. There's also a trip to Puerto Rico, we're looking at canceling that trip, just for a variety of reasons, as you know. Sometimes traveling out is okay, but then getting back in seems to be more difficult, and we certainly don't want our kids being put in that position. As it stands right now, the day trips, the field trips are still in play, meaning that if our schools are open and kids are coming to school, certainly taking a field trip to Odeon State Park or the beach is, if anything, probably less contagious, because you're out of the school and you're with a small group of just your classroom. Again, if school closes, obviously all school activities would also cease before, after, and during school, so that is still as they stand, again. As we knew, I think it was last week, CDC kind of changed in the middle of the week their perception on kids staying home, that maybe had traveled or been exposed to people, so that's how it is right now, at 10 of 7, at 10 past 7. We might have more information, but Dave and I are both very committed to getting something out at least every 48 hours. If something drastically changes, certainly we push something out sooner than that. So that's kind of the process we're using right now. Certainly, we're open to any feedback, send Dave or I an email if we've missed something, or if you have some critical questions that Phil hasn't been answered, we're more than happy to try and find the answer for you if we don't know it. So, that's kind of the update from the SAU perspective.
A couple of things I had understood in talking with you about this earlier, was that, first of all, when David is putting out these updates, that he's not just consulting with medical folks, but also with the other administrative staffs to really try to get a broad net of all these different pieces of information, and how it's being filtered down on the ground in their school system.
Right, we even, we had a, it's called the Southeastern Region Superintendent's Meeting last Thursday, we've now started kind of a Google folder, so those superintendents are pushing into that folder everything we're creating, so all of David's letters are in there, Winnicott letters go in there, Timberland goes in there, so we're getting some community input there too, from local superintendents in our particular region. So that's another tool that we're using.
I also know from a week or so ago, that, I hadn't had a chance to share this with the board, but there was, David had sent out a message to all of the board chairs to ask for some feedback when they were trying to, you know, just weigh some different decisions that were going on, and so certainly he's been reaching out to, you know, to all of us, not just trying to make decisions in a vacuum. One of the, one of the things that I know that certainly triggered this discussion and triggered a concern is, you mentioned that there's preparations for, you know, continuity of instruction, but, you know, there being a concern of a potential of schools being closed. And you answered one of the questions that I think some of us have had, which is, what's the mechanism for that? And my understanding, based on what you've told me, is that it's the governor or Health and Human Services that makes that call, the Commissioner of Education doesn't make that call.
Correct.
The superintendent can make the call for their own school.
Independently, yes.
Independently, but if it's going to come from the outside, it needs to come from either the governor or HHS, is that right?
Yes, and I imagine that would be in tandem, I imagine DHS would consult with the governor.
Right.
But I don't, I can't guarantee that.
And hopefully, with the Commissioner of Education for that matter too, it would be in the loop as part of it.
Yes, and certainly the Commissioner of Education has been in contact, I mean, even, he's called me on myself, you know, so he's been trying to support schools, so don't let me misrepresent his support for us, it's just that he doesn't have the authority to make that decision.
And we've received some updates even from the Commissioner that have gone out to the school board for that matter, as well as the National School Boards Association. So, and then the other thing about just school closures is just that, you know, I guess we're trying to get our head around on how likely it is, no one knows at this moment, but it's certainly happened in other countries, and it's happening to a limited extent in the United States so far at the secondary level, it's certainly happening a lot at the post-secondary level, that seems to be escalating recently.
Yes, yes. I know both Harvard and MIT announced today that they were closing for the rest of the semester.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that just happened, yeah.
Get ready.
And the Ivy League has canceled their basketball tournament, and there's, Columbia was closed, another number of other schools, Princeton I think was closed, a number of other schools is closed. I think yesterday, or I'll call it right today, as of yesterday it was 40 schools, but that's probably double or more just today.
Yes.
A lot of schools have made that decision. Amherst is another school I heard is also closed in our region. So, we want this opportunity both to share this information with the public, but to give a chance for members of the board, if there are things that are on your mind, that you think would be helpful to make sure that the administration is focused on, information if we don't have it now, that Esther and David can get, or keep in mind as they're thinking about these things, we just wanted to have a chance to talk about this, and certainly highlight it, because we know, given the national media, how much it's on people's minds.
Just, I would just say, I think the job that you, Esther, and David, and Steve, and Drew, and your team, has been excellent so far. I mean, the communication's been superb, and I think, especially in contrast to the effort at the national government, I think the clarity and consistency and objectivity and science-based discussion you provide us has been superb, so thank you for that.
Thanks, I just want to again thank Dr. Johnson, she's been critical in helping us have some clarity around medical questions.
So, thank you, it's excellent.
I think one other thing that you had shared with me yesterday that I thought was interesting, and I think is helpful, because from my perspective, I'm certainly very supportive of this, is that if there is some sort of school closure, my understanding is that even the hourly workers will continue to be paid.
Yes.
That that's our, you know, that's our plan. I mean, some businesses don't necessarily have that plan, if people self-quarantine and do these things, they're not necessarily paid, that wouldn't be the case in our, you know, in our, in our school districts at least.
Those are, if there's an emergency, you know, a shutdown, it's, we felt that those are budgeted positions, no one's replacing them, and just, you know, hourly employees most certainly, like most of us, depend on that paycheck, and our teachers would continue to get paid, so it only made sense to us to really support that move, to make sure everyone at least doesn't have financial worries on top of health worries.
And my also, also my understanding is that we're not, at least at this point, contemplating that there be an additional budgetary expenditure if schools are shut down, in some ways you save a little fuel, I guess, but it's not like all the students are going to enroll in V-Lax, and we have to pay another teacher to teach them, it would be our current educational staff will be coming up with a way to continue the education.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there other things that would be helpful for folks to know, or have Esther talk about?
The communication's been great.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else.
No, thanks for sharing all of that, I think it's, I think it's really helpful, and you know, I know that, again, because it can be a scary time, and you look at stock markets and other kinds of things, and you know, concerns, but you know, I think, I really appreciate the fact that I think our school district has been very proactive about this, and really trying to come up with plans and contingencies before things come into place. So, you know, I think we're going to be, hopefully, in good shape, you know, we're certainly going to have to adjust day to day, but I know all of us here on the board are available to the extent that we can help with something, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for doing that. All right, so let's next move along on the agenda. We have the Wheelwright Trust on here, is that a non-public discussion, is that?
I think that was really, it was more about the structure, wasn't it? I'm looking to you, Neil.
At some point, we have, I was hoping we had the eventual discussion, what we do next about creating buckets, you know, but we can talk about that later, I haven't prepared anything.
Okay.
Bucket, like with the charitable foundation, if we wanted to do that, there are rules we'd have to change.
Yeah.
And then, do we, how, would we want to calendarize this? I kind of liked candidly the calendar, the way we did it in the fall, because it gives us a chance to like, you know, talk about it next in the winter or spring, and then we have the end-of-year discussion, which it informs it all, it's a great communication tool, but I haven't prepared anything.
So that's something maybe, let's, that's, thanks for fleshing some of that out at least, so those are types of things that maybe folks can think about for next time, and then if you feel that you're in a position to, you know, introduce the discussion with something more prepared, then we can, you know, walk through some of those different possibilities. So we'll put it on the agenda for next month.
And with regard to that, would part of it be a discussion of the process, and I think we learned more that it needed to be a little bit more specific and guiding for folks who are applying.
Right.
That that net was really wide, and perhaps we could be more informative to help those applying.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I think the, one of the other things, without having this full discussion right now, but building on what you just said, I think there's a concern at the committee that some folks didn't know whether or not their submissions would be potentially discussed publicly, and you know, whether or not we want to keep it as sort of a non-public, or we want to let people know in advance that it could be discussed publicly, it's a public application, we'd want to think it through, so there's a number of little things that are like that, that we want to think through. But great, we'll put that on the agenda for next time. Any other thoughts about Wheelwright, before we move on? Okay, then we'll move on to committee reports, we start with the Enhanced Learning Committee. Our favorite committee.
So, the Enhanced Learning, good evening. The Enhanced Learning Committee met on March 3rd, and there are two items on the agenda, the first was a shareout of Seesaw, so Ms. Estle spent some time showing how she's been using Seesaw up here at Lincoln Street School. She talked about family announcements, which is sort of like a communication blast to all families. Activity Library, which is a communal resource where teachers from across the country can access various activities with, based on certain standards. She talked about tagging skills, which is a way on the backend where teachers can keep, it's almost like a grade book, where teachers can keep track of how kids are doing on certain ICAN's statements. And there was a discussion of that, using that tool for assessment purposes. We were looking to see if there's a way to tell if families, a way for teachers to tell if families have seen the announcements that are pushed out or not. And then, in addition to a tool that we've put together at Lincoln Street School to help the teachers sort of organize different ICAN statements, it's a little clunky on the Seesaw end, so we use the tool to help keep, organize and keep track of what ICANs are related to, different competencies. And then, there was a discussion about our, the standardized assessment we use for, three times a year for screening purposes, currently we use STAR. We, and so we're looking at the possible use of iReady, should we move to Ready Math next year, which is the pilot program that we're looking at for math instruction. That jury's still out on what direction we're going to go in, and I think the decision will probably be made in the coming weeks. And then also, looking at iXL, which is another skills practice tool that we use here, to help kids with their math and language tests. The next meeting we have is April 14th, at 7:45.
I have been able to attend some of the committee meetings for Enhanced Learning, and was there when the teachers from Main Street were presenting and showing how to use Alma. And I was wondering if there was any feedback given to this committee yet, from what we heard from parents.
Given to the ELC?
Yeah, like, were the teachers informed that we had feedback from parents?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
I think we're just looking at, tonight was the first one here for Exeter, so we haven't had a chance to give the feedback, and then we haven't touched base about the, from the other towns yet, but they sort of do.
Thank you. All right, next is facilities. Do you have any data on facilities? Another committee has a minute.
We, no, we were waiting for that proposal, and I have not received that proposal yet from, I forgot his name.
Aaron Williams.
Yes, so I can certainly shoot him another email requesting that proposal.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
For what, Esther?
For the parking lot, the town was going to, this proposal for the facilities to be-
The town had a proposal for some idea for us that we asked to be submitted before we had any meeting.
Yes, they wanted to meet to talk about some different use of it, and sharing use of the parking lot, but we said we'd like to see what they had in mind, so we could at least think about it before we met with them. But we haven't got anything.
And that's something they've been sort of trying to, you know, think through, I guess, for the last couple of years, if there's any possibility or ways, and we haven't really come to anything, so, yeah. We also told them we wanted to wait until we had the new parking lot, and we bus looped it all that up and running for a while to see how things are going, so this would sort of be, I don't know, I guess, see what they, their needs maybe are.
But now it's probably good timing, because we've gone through, you know, six months of-
Jury said there's still been a lot of spaces available.
Yeah.
Yep.
But there's also a warrant article tonight on the ballot about parking on Lincoln Street, so I think it's, some of that may play into what they're thinking as well.
Joe, what are you going to say?
Nothing that has to do with this conversation.
You can tell us all later.
Yeah.
Okay, so next is wellness and nutrition.
This is a very long report. We didn't meet, our next meeting will be on March 24th.
At what time is the meeting?
You're always at 7:45 to 8:25.
Okay, so, okay, so next, I was wrong when I said before that Enhanced Learning is our favorite committee, because diversity, equity, and inclusion is our favorite committee, and so, wrong with that.
Being the guy who gets to give both of them, I feel special either way.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't look up to see what's good.
The DEI committee had a big day today, we, the first half of the day, the staffs for Lincoln and Main Street were at the high school for some PD that Ms. Azabel and SAU folks organized for us.
PD means professional development.
Professional development, excuse me.
Just for the people in television land.
It was a fantastic morning, after that, we came back here, and we had Monique Marshall, who is a teacher at the Wildwood School in LA, and she led us through a training, had all sorts of goals, one of which was to help us define multicultural and recognize the importance of adult identity in the classroom and workspace. And then, as we got through towards the end, we discussed how to use those skills and those ideas, and incorporate them in the classroom to help kids with the same, the same thing. So, the DEI committee has been working pretty hard to put this training together and organize it with Ms. Marshall, in addition to the most recent committee meeting where we were looking and working at revising the mission statement for the committee itself. So that's still work in progress, we'll bring the revised statement to the next meeting, which is March 25th, with some feedback that we got from various committee members.
Can you say anything else about just the- Can you say anything else about just the, the general professional development session in the morning? Does still have more what happened there?
I'd be happy to. So the, generally speaking, it was organized in a way where teachers throughout the district, middle, high, and elementary gave TED Talks. So the morning started off with TED Talks from those teachers. It was really inspiring. It was really impressive, the caliber of speakers, I guess you could say in general, that we have in this SAU plus the ideas that they shared. It's really inspiring and motivating, honestly, for an educator to hear that. So maybe there were six? Okay, six TED Talks in the morning. There was a keynote given by Renee Brown, super impressive, not in person. And we broke out, that would be really impressive. She didn't come because of coronavirus. No, and then we, we had, we had work groups for another one hour session that was also made up of teacher presenters, and those were one hour long each. So everyone had a chance to go to one breakout session and to listen to the keynote and the TED Talks in the morning. So it was a really inspiring morning. It was nice.
Questions? Thank you. All right, next we have the SAU Safety Committee update.
Sure, I gave the update last time. We're meeting in May 6th, 2020.
Say anything about this?
I did last time. Let me say it again, that we're, we're collecting feedback from all the schools around the locked classroom doors and the Safety and Security Task Force will review all that data that each principal will bring and share out and then review that decision again and talk about it.
Great.
Will they be reviewing that at the next meeting?
In May.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, so next we have the SAU Social, Emotional, and Mental Health Committee.
Sure, we met and we have a lot of action items that came out of that committee. One of them being Exeter High School is starting a social, emotional support kind of activities, et cetera, for their staff, which they are, the only school so far that didn't have a group that kind of got together and planned a variety of things. And today, for example, they plan to potluck for their staff after the morning. So just starting kind of small and looking at some things to bring them together in an environment that isn't always necessarily driven around a specific activity or that's not, you know, the lunch is the activity, it's not in addition to. So that's exciting. Our other schools are working with a subgroup to develop a resource page for our staff around social, emotional wellness and learning. And we're going to create a bank, hopefully is the goal of community resources, that they can access everything from yoga and to mindfulness and wellness, as well as, you know, support for counseling, financial support, those kinds of things. So that's the big, what that groups we're going to now is trying to pull that all together so they can develop a webpage that would be for staff only. So, came out of that survey that we did and trying about what causes stress. And so we're looking at also different kinds of what else overwhelms you. The other thing obviously is sometimes, I'm sure the coronavirus piece is overwhelming right now to them, so how do we try to support them? And that's part of why we met with principals. So those things that come up that cause additional stress that is unforeseen or unplanned for and trying to support teachers through that process, whether it's something like the coronavirus or a curriculum piece or things like that, even the equity work, you know, kind of support everyone to do that work, but also make it manageable for them.
In the minutes that I read, there was something referenced called like professional fatigue?
Compassion fatigue.
Compassion fatigue?
That would be it.
I felt like some of the, the focus groups were, were trying to get a handle and ask teachers for feedback on just like their, their level of fatigue and stress as you're talking about and just how critical that was and that some teachers had given me as feedback, just as a board member, that they hadn't really been asked about that before and that they felt really appreciated that it was getting incorporated, that the first process, step in the process was asking and understanding side, taking the temperature of how many things teachers are asked to do and how many stressors there are in their lives. And they're probably a little bit different if you're a kindergarten teacher or a teacher for high school. And so that was a positive step forward for this group that did like significant work. And Patty's the person who attends, you know, all the meetings and I've been able to attend some, so.
In regards to that, thanks to you for reminding me of that. Both Lincoln and Main Street have met with their faculties around more, part of that compassion fatigue and what they can do as adults to support themselves as well as how to access some supports. And I just want to thank Renee, and I can't remember who presented for you.
Melissa.
Melissa, for presenting to those faculties and really trying to give them some other sources of support around that kind of compassion fatigue.
Right, and creating time and space and teachers' days to focus on their teaching and their planning with so many other pieces that are at play.
So we'll find out, something that builds on this, even though it's not part of the committee work per se, is that we'll find out what happens, I guess by tomorrow with the voters, because I think the polls are closed now. Are they closing in 45 minutes? I don't know when they close.
Close at eight.
They close at eight. So you got 45 minutes, but, you know, we have both in terms of our operating budget, we have an additional position of a social worker, which provides a lot of support, obviously, and hopefully offloads some responsibility on teachers. And the other area is in the contract negotiations. And in the new contract, there's some additional things with trying to provide some more support and time for teachers was, that's something that came out of the negotiation process was a real need. And I think the board was very responsive to that. And I think the, the Exeter Teachers Association felt like they were listened to and heard and that was incorporated into the final approved contract that was presented to the voters. So hopefully both those things get approved. We won't know until tomorrow, but obviously our board is in support of that. And if they do get approved, that will be very helpful for our teaching staff and for the students and the whole community. So we will see. All right, so next we have the SAU Policy Committee update. We have two policies that are on here, two new policies. I don't know if you want to say anything, you want me just to say?
Couldn't attend.
Okay, let me just say something about, so, yep, so there's, there's two policies. There's a policies we don't make any decisions on tonight because they are new. But one of them is on, it's called nondiscrimination reporting procedure in food service programs that even, you know, that there, that there are federal laws that are related to even discrimination related to food service and involving the New England Office of, I guess it's Office of Civil Rights at some point, but the USDA is involved and some of that's built into the policy. So it's funny because this is one that doesn't have legal references in here, but it, there are, you know, is sort of a broader connection to federal laws.
Yeah, having this policy was a mandate from the New Hampshire Food Service when we had the food service audit that came out of this policy, came out of that audit.
So it's really just provides, it tries to provide some clarity about what the process is, is that if someone has a concern, kind of what their rights are, who they would address things to, how they go about it. It's really a procedural policy. But if there are any feedback that members of the board have or members of the public have, you know, certainly want to keep that in mind as we look at fine tuning that. And then the other policy that we have, that's a proposed new policy, is it's called mandatory code of conduct reporting for all employees. So this is one that, there are state guidelines about code of conduct on the variety of responsibilities that educators have. And this talks about that essentially you either need to report any suspected violations and self-report if you think you've violated. So it's just really, again, it's, it's clarifying what the responsibilities are and to provide some clarity about how you go about it. But again, like any policy, if we have comments or feedback or we think, but we don't like the wording with something, these are things that we can fine tune to work for our district. That's it. Any questions or comments about that at this point?
No.
Okay, we'll think it over and we'll bring them up at the next meeting. Yeah. Okay. Any other committees? I know there's, there's the, Patty couldn't be here, but she had mentioned that the, in terms of the superintendent evaluation committee, which isn't on here, there wasn't really any progress or update or anything to really report. There's not really anything with professional development or sabbatical. I think those decisions have been, have been made. I think, I think we gave an update on that last time. So there are a couple other committees, but they haven't been, if they're not on here, it's because there really hasn't been any activity in the short term. All right, so let's move on to the principals' report, starting with curriculum initiatives.
So usually I have the opportunity to go first and then Drew gets to say ditto. This time I'm going to say ditto what Drew said. I thought that the opening this morning was really compelling, especially with the TED Talks that were given by the different teachers. Dr. Ryan also shared a TED Talk and talked about a personal accident that he experienced and how it impacted his life. And one of the main themes that he had from his TED Talk was just how when you look at every day, it's really, you just got to embrace every day because you remember what the difficult days are like and then you've got to look at the regular days and just think, this is a great day. And I think certainly, and we are so fortunate in our work to be able to work with children and that just brings a lot of joy to our daily, despite the fact that we do have challenges here and there. So it was a very good day and I won't tell you much more about that, but I just thought it was a really worthwhile day. We had instructional rounds on February 18th. Twenty-two teachers and administrators from SAU, 16 came. Dr. Ryan was one of them and they visited Main Street School. Our problem of practice was really around the question of what evidence do you see of students engaged in student-centered learning? They were given a copy of, the SAU has a coaching tool around student-centered learning that has four areas. The four areas are positive relationships, voice and choice, world, authentic, real-world learning, and meaningful assessment. And they collected data for us. We got a lot of really positive feedback just around the overall climate of the school, around the, sort of the, the first piece of positive relationships. They saw it just was a real strength of this school. And they gave us a really some suggestions for things to continue to work on as we look at how to bring student-centered learning to Main Street School. Karate International came again this year. We volunteered their time and they taught our students a ways to be an upstander versus a bystander. And I just want to thank our phys ed teachers, Katie McNamara, Sam Nguyen, and Mary Clements for bringing that program. And they're always looking for ways to build connections for students with local physical opportunities in the community. One of my favorites was we had dog tag voting again with our kindergarten students. All the kindergarten students got to vote on the shape of next year's dog tag here in Exeter. I want to thank Andy Kohler, she does a wonderful job. We've visited every kindergarten classroom. We chose between a dog head, a dog bone, and a dog house. The dog bone was the winner this year. That's what you can expect to see on your dog tag next year and the students really enjoyed voting. We also had voting for a logo with the new report card. We, the first draft of that, the first report card that went out, the logos was the high school logo. So we had Christine Grollo and her digital medial, media art students provided us with eight options for our students to select from and they're voting on those as we speak. And I can give you an update on our new logo when I come in April. Tonight there was feedback on the new Alma reporting. We got a lot of really valuable feedback and how we can continue to make it more meaningful for parents. I think some of the things we really need to look at is sort of how we structured the report card, how, some of the language of the report card, were some of the things that parents said that need to happen in order for it to be more meaningful for parents. We have been doing composting at Main Street School, second grade was doing it. We moved that down to first grade. The Green Committee was formed this year and that's been really helpful. I want to thank Sarah DeWitt, who really was one of the parents who was instrumental in sort of forming that committee and helping us to compost. And it's worked out quite well and the kids are doing well with it. We had Read Across America this March and this year the NEA had, or actually February, this year the NEA had the focus of celebrating a nation of diverse readers, which is a different focus than we've done in the past. And we were happy to incorporate that into the work we did. In our lower hall, you'll see a map of the world with books from all over, children's books representing different parts of the world to represent the diversity of children and the books that they can read. We also had for Family Story Hour, a presentation by Grammy award-winning author and musician Ben Gerdesheimer. And he shares stories in two languages and songs that celebrate diversity. And then we also had an open circle lunch related to diversity as well. So PTO had their raffle, which I always love. It's, students get a chance to buy tickets and the opportunity to connect with different staff members. And I had two students who were principal of the day on Monday and they did, I have to say, they were terrific. Jane Garrity and Philip Manalo were the, both first grade students and they went in and read a book to a kindergarten class. We, we did a lot of things. They did classroom observations with me and gave back positive comments to the teachers and the kids on what they were seeing. They helped me do morning announcements. I didn't have any birthday pencils to pass out, which is a little disappointing. But they also read a book to the kindergarten kids and boy, I tell you, those kids were mesmerized by those two first graders reading. It was just a lot of fun. And it was not an easy book either. I was, I was quite impressed with them as readers. Kindergarten orientation and registration will be happening on March 19th from 6:00 to 7:30. And this is an opportunity for families to get their registration materials and also learn more about our full day kindergarten program. And the other piece is we are very, very busy starting the process of hiring for the staff who have retired for this year.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Let's just pause for a moment. Just, has there, has there been any thoughts that, how that would work if there was a disruption in service? And go back to the coronavirus piece, that if we closed the schools for some reason, what we would do in terms of hiring for next year?
It would be off for 10 days, I'm sure, because we, no one can come into the schools.
Right. So it depends on how long the schools were closed?
Yeah, my, yeah, the general consensus there would probably be that incubation period, which would be 10 school days.
Shorter period of time. Okay. And not, but if they were closed for the term, we just had to, we'd have to figure that out.
We'd have to figure that out.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
I'll put it on the question list.
I, it just occurred to me now, I think it's additional thing, I mean, you know, knocking on whatever, I don't know if this is wood, but looking for some, there you go. I mean, I'm hopeful it doesn't happen, but just thinking ahead if those sort of things do happen, yeah.
Yeah, we've already started the process of sending up interviews and it could create some, some interesting challenges.
Yeah, yeah.
So I do get to say ditto on a lot of what Steve said. We are also in the hiring process. We've had interviews on Thursday, Friday, and Monday for both our teaching positions and the media specialist position. We've, through our hiring process, we've, between those two positions, well, three positions, two roles, had close to 150 applicants. So we're, we've got a lot of people to choose from, so it's, it's a good problem to have. Wanted to give a couple extra updates on what we're doing here at Lincoln Street School for the coronavirus. Nurse Garrity has made her way to all of the lunches to discuss proper hand sanitizing practices with the kids. We have, we remind them of the hand sanitizer that is in the lunchroom and ask that they use it both before and after they, before they eat their lunch or get their lunch and then when they're leaving as well, in addition to obviously washing their hands in their classrooms as frequently as possible. Talk about cloth and cover, all of the typical things that we do. And one of the hugest things, which is during the coronavirus time and not, but keeping personal space, keeping your hands to yourself, obviously is a, is a monstrous. And one of the hugest things, which is during the coronavirus time and not, but keeping personal space, keeping your hands to yourself, obviously, is a monstrous one that is a major topic of conversation at, like, in street school. One thing I wanted to mention too, Chris Clifford, when we were talking earlier about the staff wellness and self-care, Chris Clifford also helped immensely in that presentation. I just wanted to make sure that she wasn't forgotten. There is an art show at Art Upfront Street right now with LSS and Main Street School students. For those of you that don't know, Art Upfront Street is an artist's collective of nine working studios and a professional gallery displaying a variety of beautiful and intriguing work. There you go. Ms. Wheeler Bean, who is one of the nine, LSS visual arts teacher, Ms. Lebranche, is very excited to have the opportunity to display artwork from our third, fourth, and fifth grade kiddos. So if you would like to visit, the display opened on March 7th. However, on normal business hours, Tuesday to Wednesday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Thursday to Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00. That will be a time where you can see the display until the closing date of March 28th. Ms. Wheeler Bean is giving tours of the space for many of the students from Lincoln and Main Street Schools, for teachers that sign up for a slot, they're taking a walking field trip down to check out the artwork. So we appreciate the use of the space and you guys being open to it, and it's, I haven't made my way there yet, but I'm looking forward to doing so.
Do you know anything about how the, I know there was an opening reception. I saw a few pictures online. Do you know how that went?
Through, from what I hear, it went swimmingly. It was wonderful. I don't know if.
Want me to speak to it?
Sure.
Yeah?
Sure.
It was very well attended. Lots and lots of families. Thank you for putting up on the marquee, because it definitely brought a lot more families than seeing it on the Main Street School marquee. I don't know, our first half an hour, we probably had 100 people. I think our owners were a little concerned about the fire code, but we moved them along, and it was steady all day. Both Marty Byrd and Eleanor Lebranche made a wonderful decision to stagger the opening. So for Main Street, it was from 10:00 to 1:00. From Lincoln, it was from 1:00 to 4:00, because that's a lot of families coming in. There's a lot of artwork. There's about 175 pieces, and it is absolutely stunning. It's well worth a look.
Thank you.
And just an update, we'll talk about this at the PTO meeting on Wednesday, but our maple sugaring process has begun. We had our first boil this Saturday. Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Estle were here, and they used for the first time the reverse osmosis machine, which they acquired through the Tucker Mountain Challenge grant that they received last fall, I believe they got this. And so we had 80 gallons of sap to boil down the reverse osmosis machine. We're still learning on the details exactly how that thing works. But I do know that through, it separates the water from the sugar. And it, so it speeds the evaporation process. It allows you to get more syrup out of the sap that you have, so it makes it more efficient, which means that there'll be less wood that has to be used because we have to burn it less. And the last year they purchased the finisher that helps make the syrup that much, helps the clarity of the syrup. So there is, now that we've boiled down the first crop, hopefully the weather won't get too warm, because when the weather gets warm, it spoils the sap. But, so we are looking to preserve the sap that we have, and so Ms. Estle and Mr. Schmidt are going to be doing a display for kids throughout the school to come in. I should, Ms. Estle and Ms. Schmidt are setting it up. Their children in their class are putting, are doing the display work and teaching other kids throughout the school about the sugaring process. And that will be next week. They have a couple days next week, Tuesday and a Thursday next week. They'll be doing that, so it's always an exciting time. Kids have been lugging around the sap, so they get to see what, what happens next. And then one last thing, as Allison mentioned, the, we had yearbook flyers sent home. So if anybody is interested in purchasing a yearbook, there's a flyer that was sent home that you can purchase them online. And then I will also have a spot in my next several updates where you can click a link and I'll take you right there, so keep your eyes out for that.
Can I ask a question? When you and Steve have been hiring, getting ready for it, are you doing this, is it the same, is it this Super Saturday? Or is it the same process as last year, or is it, is this a different process?
So I don't want to speak for Steve personally. I got started a little bit early this year, knowing that there were lots of openings throughout the district. So I wanted to do Thursday and Friday, and using, we are doing a job fair this Saturday, knowing that I would be able to see even more people if I did it a little bit beforehand, and use the job fair in addition to.
So the district has a job fair coming up, is that right?
Saturday, 10:00 to 2:00, is that right?
I think it's one, but enough.
10:00 to 1:00.
Because that was very, I think last year was the first year for that. It was very successful.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yes, we are using the job fair, and as Drew said, that we're also, we've, on our own screening, probably just for classroom teachers, we'll be doing screening interviews prior to full interviews with about probably 18 candidates. So we will have looked at a really strong pool of candidates as we move forward, and it will be an intense process.
I'm assuming it's the same population size that Drew was talking about? Is it, there's a large number applying for a smaller version of slots?
We have well over 100 people who've applied for just classroom positions, and then there's other applications for other positions.
So in terms of upcoming events, just again, highlight the PTO meeting tomorrow, 5:30. And in terms of enrollments, our enrollment, it's really the same report that they continue to be strong. It's interesting just to look at, at Main Street School compared to last year, we actually have about 10 more students. So if anything, it's ticked up just a little bit. So, you know, we've been lucky in that regard. There's the Commissioner of Education. I heard an interview with him recently where he was talking about the statewide trend of decreased enrollments. And I don't know if you saw that as well, but I think WMR covered it. And the projection even going forward is that that's going to continue across the state. And we've been lucky to be in a community that has been somewhat bucking that trend. Combination of, you know, affordable housing and, you know, vibrant community and a little bit more diverse community and for a variety of reasons. We had someone, a demographer, and a, boy, I'm forgetting his name, I know it.
Peter Princes.
Yes, Peter Princes, that worked with us years ago, that had said that that was more of the makeup, at least at that time. And looking forward, it seemed that it would be the makeup of our community. But we've been fortunate that the community leaders have continued to invest in the community, and we've been continuing to attract younger families.
Lots of the schools.
Well, we have excellent schools. Certainly, that's part of it. I should do, that's, that's true. Just start with that. I mean, we've been able to maintain incredible schools, which is one of the reasons why people come here, for sure.
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, and that's, but that's a reflection of our community too, that they've supported those initiatives. So, and hopefully they will get some more support tonight too. But enrollments continue to be strong, so that's, that's positive news. All right, next we'll move on to the SEU 16 update.
Sure, we have the board report that's aligned with the goals, that newer, newer format to help with the superintendent evaluation process. So the first one is just on budget to performance data. I know Dave has been putting that together and pushed it out to the smaller schools. He was working on the co-op, and Exeter will be getting that data soon. Then CMS, Patty Wans, has developed a presentation and around multi-tiered systems of support and the interventions block and what that would look like for that scheduled change anticipated for next year. Also, the audits will be hopefully wrapped up soon. It was for, obviously for June 30th, 2019 year. They're substantially completed, but we haven't got our management letters yet. And when I do, I'll put that in the board packet for your review, as well as have access to the full report if you want to look at that. Obviously, visibility in the community. A lot of our central office staff, et cetera, went out and got to do some reading with the Read Across America. As well, as you can see, this is a picture of Mr. Andruski out here at Lincoln Street doing some maple serping. I just want to say for the record, I wasn't invited to something for, I think it has something to do with his wife, maybe, I don't know. So that was really, he said that was a ball. And I know that all of our administrators have been out in the front of the schools. So it's, we get to do some really fun stuff. That's the best part of our job, I think. Great. Thanks for inviting us to the schools. And then we're continuing to gather information on that K-2 reporting system that I think it was Steve spoke of. As you can see, tonight was Main Street, and then the rest of this week, we have East Kingston and Kensington. And Newfield, I did last week. So we've done, and we did Brentwood too, yeah, last week. So we're working our way through it. We'll get everybody in to get that input back. So far, the themes seem fairly consistent, yeah, presented in different ways. Basically, I want to say, anybody help me out that was there, but it seems like some, you know, some format changes would be critical of how it's put together and aligned to make it easier for parents. Language needs to be reworked as far as that kind of that ed you speak or technicals speak in that. So we're working to revamp some of those things to include those social emotion pieces, or what we call our cares, which is cooperation and respect and empathy, some icons that relate to that. And as well as information around, is my child on track? What does developing mean? Those kinds of questions are on a proficiency scale itself, as well as how does my child compare to others? And are they on track, which isn't clear in the way it's presented now? So that's pretty much the general themes from the first three that we've done. That's been the same. So I anticipate those same themes will come up, but we'll see. We're also meeting with all the faculties in our different buildings. We met with Kensington faculty today. Their feedback is slightly different, more around use of the AMA and how they can make that platform more user-friendly perhaps for them. Organizing pieces and just conversations that we need to have with teachers that they feel like that would be helpful for their process, as well as the conversations they have at parent conferences with, with parents. So we're working on all those pieces. The only change to the June report card will be the addition of the cares document, because that was ready and vetted, and that got sent to AMA. The other pieces we know we will have to work on over the summer, just because to change the platform with AMA, they've told us that's pretty intense, some of the things we want, and not a quick fix. So we're gathering it. We will present though, that to parents, that we know these changes are coming, be looking for them next year, that we've heard you, and we're working towards those. So we're continuing to gather the feedback, and we'll continue to move forward to make that better. I would like to say that on all accounts, parents do report that they appreciate the instruction and the competency-based approach to the instruction at the school level. It's the reporting that's more, I think, a frustration than the actual delivery of that competency-based learning. People really seem to appreciate that, moving on ready, meeting kids where they're at, those kinds of things really seem to be much appreciated. So that's kudos to all the teachers, doing an excellent job, and our administrators supporting that work.
Any questions? Okay, so next we have new businesses, or any new business that we need to bring up? Yes?
I do. You just might notice in your packet was the general information, the school calendar, 8.2. I just wanted to highlight that we have, all the early release days will be on Thursdays next year, and students will be dismissed at 12:00 noon. That's again in that response of trying to provide a little more time for our educators to get together and do those professional donuts, what you spoke to Patrick, trying to meet some of that overwhelmed feeling as part of the social emotional piece, as well as all our elementary schools were able to coordinate. So we'll be able to combine efforts across districts when applicable. For example, if we bring in a speaker, or there's a comment, we want all the third grade teachers to get together, there'll be some flexibility to do that. So we're excited about that, at that change, but we did want to bring that to the board's attention. That was the only piece.
Other items that are new items? Okay, then we will meet again in April. At that point, we will be a new school board because we will have an election. At this point, there's only one person on the ballot, but we got to make sure that that person is voted in. But, so yeah, so I think we're done for tonight. So thank you for coming, and that concludes our meeting.